The city of Bristol, providing beautiful parks, economic development, and a family-friendly community.
Okay, good evening, everyone. We're going to open our joint meeting of the Board of Finance and City Council for Tuesday, July 14, 2020. Several of us are seated in chambers, and we have several members of the Board of Finance joining us online. Before we begin, I'd like to ask those who are present and able to please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular joint meeting from June 9, 2020, as well as the special joint meeting on June 2, 2020. Is there a motion?
Move to accept.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor of both sets of minutes.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Your Honor, can we just make sure we know who is on remotely? There is a telephone number there, I just don't know. I know Orlando Kelfi's there, Ron Burns, and Cheryl Tebow. Is there anyone else that's on the call that's not in chambers?
I think that's it for Board of Finance.
Thank you.
And Mr. Smith is here, just arrived.
And Mr. Smith, and Mr. Mace?
Yep.
Okay. Moving on to our consent calendar, there are items 2A through F that are presented. Is there anything on the consent calendar that any member of the joint meeting would like to pull off for additional discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar, items 2A through F?
I'd like to move the consent calendar.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent calendar. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The third agenda item is to transfer $60,000 from the general fund contingency account to the insurance claims deductible account.
So moved.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 4 is to transfer $32,738 within the public works operating budget for year-end transfers.
So moved.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded by Councilwomen Barney and Han in either combination. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next agenda item is the monthly revenue and expense report presentation by Controller Diane Waldron.
Good evening, everyone. You have the report in front of you, just a couple of things that I do want to highlight. We are in the process of closing our fiscal year. The report you have is very preliminary. Those of you that have been here the last few years know that we have a lot of journal entries and closing entries and everything that we have to do for the audit. But just to highlight a few things that I know are very positive, our tax revenue collections, we did collect 100% of the current tax levy that we had budgeted, and I think that's phenomenal. Last year, we were at 99.8%. So that additional amount helped tremendously. And the tax collector, she put together her first preliminary report for her tax collector's report, that's really the official report of what her collection rate is for the year, and she is at 99%. So City has not seen that in a while. So I think that's a good testament to her, and also, you know, Bristol taxpayers are paying their bills. Last year, the collection rate was 98.6. Prior year tax revenue collections are at 107.3%, so again, we've exceeded that. And the motor vehicle supplement, which I've been reporting that that, I knew we were going to exceed that one, that's at 137.5% for a total of 1.92 million. Building permit revenue came in strong at 1.46 million. Last year, we're at 1.27. Convenance fees came in more than expected. And then investment earnings, we came in at 1.19 million, so we're at 127% of the budget. Last year, we were at 1.37 million. And the only thing that I'll just point out is, we have seen, as you know, the trend in interest rates declining over the last few months. So definitely, that is representative of that trend. Police special duty, I think last month, I just reported, just to give you trend numbers, we're about 435,000 lower than this year at the same time, primarily, again, because of the Route 6 project. So there's not as much private duty going on this year as there was in the prior year. And there is a corresponding reduction in the expenditures, if you look at that line item, in the police department budget. So that's kind of a wash, the way we budget for that. And then the recreation fees, those are less than anticipated, again, primarily because of COVID, of all of the programs that they were not able to run. So recreation fees are less than anticipated. On the expenditure side, though, there were some savings. Right now, what we're seeing, just one more number I just want to give you. So right now, if you add, if I look at everything, all the surpluses that we have on the revenue side, it's about 2 mil, just under $2 million. So I think that's really positive at this point. On the expenditure side, we have a few areas where there are surplus funds. Corporation council, their professional fees have a significant amount remaining. We will be carrying these over, though, to fiscal 2021. I know when we looked at the budget for this current year, we knew we were going to be able to roll over some of those monies. So that will happen for that account. Youth services, public works, fleet maintenance, a lot of money left over in snow removal, so it was a good year as far as that goes. Solid Waste and Streets divisions returned some money. And then the part-time accounts in recreation and parks, again, due to COVID-19. And I just took another quick look, too. Parks also had a significant savings in one of their salary accounts as well. I think it was Parks Recreation Maintenance. So I think, taking all of these savings and the surplus, time will tell. You know, I know we wanted to take some of those funds and put them, again, reestablish our mill rate stabilization reserve fund, and put some more money into our health insurance reserve fund. So I think we'll be able to do that. So we'll just watch that as we close everything out. On the city side, right now, we have completed the first FEMA application package. That was $424,000. About 65% of that was labor costs, 25% materials cost. And FEMA actually has been pretty responsive. We sent it into them, and I think within a week, we had a response back from them looking for additional information. So we are in the process right now of gathering that information. I think our deadline is this week to get that to them, and we'll definitely meet it. Our staff has been working really diligently on that. So hopefully, we'll know what was approved, what's not approved, and then anything that's FEMA doesn't cover, we're told that the state coronavirus relief fund will cover. So that deadline is August 31st. So there's a lot of deadlines coming up that we have to get all of this information in. Does anybody have any questions on any of the FEMA report? I don't know if anybody calling in does. On the Board of Ed side, I'll just report this. I know in the last report that the business, the finance director did, they are currently looking at approximately a $600,000 surplus. So again, that's positive, because if you know, the last few years, we've had to fund them. So I think it's all, all good news on that front. And then the other thing, I think we wanted to talk about the mission statement for the budget.
Yes. So I do have some copies with me, and then we can distribute electronically. But last year, we had a discussion about trying to be dynamic with the mission statement that appears in the budget book, even though not a ton of people probably read it. We ran a little bit out of time last year, so we felt that we could distribute it in July, and then we could discuss it at both the July Board of Finance meeting, as well as the August Joint Board meeting, which would still make it in time for the deadlines that the budget needs. So this is what it currently is, "To make Bristol a high-quality-of-life destination community for residents and businesses by supporting a strong education system and ensuring long-term financial stability through innovative and responsive government services." So again, no action needed for tonight, but we'll just get this into the hands of the Board of Finance members that are online, and just ask for feedback at our next couple of meetings, and see if there's anybody that would like to tweak it a little bit or have some creative ideas about how to constantly make this a statement that reflects who we are at this given time. There is no other business to come before the joint meeting. I will ask for a motion to adjourn and remind everybody that has called in to please stay on the line, because the call does not change between now and the City Council meeting, which we will be commencing in about five minutes. So is there a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, the motion to adjourn has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will reconvene in four and a half minutes. Okay, I'd like to call our City Council meeting for Tuesday, July 14 to order. It's 7:00 PM, and we have all council members in the chamber for probably the first time since our March meeting. So for those of you who are joining us, please stand and have this Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the members of the City Council please introduce themselves, starting on my far right?
Peter Kelly, District 2.
Greg Han, District 1.
Scott Rosato, District 1.
Dave Proleski, District 2.
Brittany Barney, District 3.
Mary Fortier, District 3.
And I'm Mayor Ellen Zapposasou. Our second agenda item is the approval of minutes of the regular City Council meeting on June 9, 2020, and the special City Council meeting that occurred on June 12, 2020.
Move to accept.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our third item is public participation. We'll start first with anybody who may be in the chambers that has signed up. Is there anyone, Dawn? Okay. Now, we'll ask those who are joining us online, is there anybody that is joining the City Council meeting through our WebEx application that would like to address the City Council Nobody has anything to say. Moving on to announcements, we are going to start off our meeting with some great news, with some friends that are joining us both on screen as well as here in chambers. So this is going to be a combination, online, in-chambers presentation. And to start it off, I'd like to ask our Economic Development Director, Justin Malley, to come up, Lindell from Doubletree. And Justin can introduce this topic, and also introduce our guests that are joining us on the screen.
Dawn, thank you for that. That looks cool. So this is an example of a project that we sort of been dying to talk about earlier, but had to get to the right point, and this is that point. You all have heard from me over the years, probably too much. So the best thing that I could probably do now is throw it to Jim. Jim, if you're on the call, why don't you say hello? And can you talk a little bit about how we started with this project? Obviously, we're talking about the Home2 in Conference Center Hotel project, but Jim, can you fill in the details on sort of how we got to this point?
So Jim Frenness is the CEO of Prestige Hospitality Group, who is partnering with Dr. Niznik on the Home2 expansion that will go to the rear of the Doubletree Hotel. Welcome, Jim.
Thank you for allowing us to present this evening, really on behalf of Dr. Niznik, who could not be here. Again, I'm Jim Frenness, I'm the CEO of Prestige Hospitality Group. We own and manage 32 hotels in eight states, from Lake Placid, New York, to North Carolina, Charlotte, North Carolina. While we're headquartered in Albany, I am a Connecticut resident. I live in Prospect, Connecticut, and I have family members who also live in Bristol. We provide the oversight management for the Doubletree Hotel. We've been involved since 2010 with the original renovation and expansion. Again, on behalf of Dr. Niznik, we thank you for letting us present tonight. Couldn't be here, but he is excited to come back in September, when we plan to have a groundbreaking ceremony. And again, this expansion is just another commitment from Dr. Niznik to provide our first-class, you know, accommodations and events in Bristol. Justin, I want to thank you, because all along the way, you know, you've been instrumental in helping us meet with the folks at Otis Elevator, you know, to actually buy the parcels, which were important to make this development happen. And then you helped us guide us through the 229, the process of gaining approval through 229 Technology Park. And really, every time I've called, you've been right there, and I want to thank you for that. In fact, really, every department in the city of Bristol has been tremendous in helping us get as far as we are in the process. And I think Bill Masetti, who is also going to join via teleconference, will echo those comments in a few minutes. And Mayor, I want to thank you very much for the several meetings that you took with us. Certainly gave Dr. Niznik, you know, the confidence in knowing that Bristol is open for business. And we're excited to move forward. I, at this time, would like to introduce the General Manager of the Doubletree, Lindell. Lynn is in the audience, and if you don't know her, she lives in Avon. She's been the General Manager since 2012. She's a leader in our company. She not only runs a successful hotel operation, but she's a board member of the Connecticut Lodging Association. She mentors many of the General Managers in my company, and she'll be instrumental through throughout, really, the development, and also running of the new facilities. So again, Lynn, would you, if you're there at the podium, can you just kind of describe your experience in Bristol, and what the expectations are going to be for the new hotel and event center?
Perfect, I'd be happy to. Thank you, board members, Justin, for everything you have done for us, too. I echo Jim's comments, of course. It's been a great experience, and it's been a great experience to be a part of Bristol for the eight years I've been here, and watched the Doubletree grow. You know, I see, I've seen it evolve, I've seen what it's capable of doing, and I really feel as though I have a strong grasp on what the area's looking for. And you've all been so supportive, and I can't thank you enough, and couldn't have done this, of course, without my management company, Jim Frenness, being at the helm of that, as well as Dr. Niznik and Risa. So thank you for this opportunity. You know, I started out with the construction phase, where I had five employees, and I had it up to 120 employees, and several events throughout the year, and high occupancy for the hotel. So I can't wait till we get back to that. And adding this new component with the 90 rooms in a Home2 Suites, which you can see the pictures, there's one on each side of the room. So it's 90 rooms with a beautiful event space down below. It's geared towards the extended-stay market, which is part of, which is individuals normally staying five nights or longer. It'll be connected from the Doubletree to a tunnel underground with underground parking. And then, on the other side of that, is the 50-plus-thousand-square-foot event center, which will be able to accommodate 450 people on each side, so a little over 800 people seated, and close to, and over 1,000 people, obviously, in the event center when it's wide open. We're really trying to make this a dynamic space, something that's really beautiful and unique, because we saw a need. Individuals were going to downtown Hartford, or to some of the area cities, and we really wanted to bring that business back to Bristol. Bristol has been so good to us, and we try to be as good back by doing what we can do for the community. But we believe in this event center, and with the support of Prestige and the doctor, he really wants to make it something special, with a really incredible outdoor space, incredible interiors inside, and a concept that will really, I believe, bring a lot of venues to Bristol. So we're excited. And we're excited to work with Bill and ACG, a local company that actually built the Doubletree as well, so they understand, you know, what we already have and where we can go. These are all great companies to work with. My hotel, I should just add, you know, we've been really fortunate with Doubletree. We finished the year last year on the top 10 of all the hotels in the United States out of 450. And the eight years I've been there, we've grown it, and it has stayed consistently in the top 10% of all the Doubletree. So we're thrilled about that. So know that I plan on doing the same thing for the Home2 Suites and the event center as well. So let's hope you bring all your weddings and all your celebrations and everything you've got going, because we want it all indoors and outdoors. We're also building a really incredible space outside as well. So thank you.
This is great.
Thank you for giving us this opportunity. We're excited.
Yep.
I'd like to introduce Bill, the General Contractor, Bill Masetti, who's up there on the screen also, I know wants to add a few words.
I hope everybody can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. Thank you very much, Lynn. And Mayor, council members, thank you very much for having us tonight. I greatly appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name is Bill Masetti, I'm President of ACG North America. We're east here, in 21 Alcyon Drive, right here in Bristol. We've enjoyed Bristol as our home since 2004, and it's been a wonderful experience. ACG was commissioned by Dr. Niznik to create the campus hotel and conference center, tying back into the Doubletree. Under the leadership of Mayor Zappo, and Mr. Justin Malley, Mr. Robert Flanagan, City of Bristol staff, and volunteer boards, we've been given the okay to go ahead and get started. We retained the services of the local firm, Amara Associates. Some of you may be familiar with them. They designed the Boys and Girls Club and many other local projects. And you may be familiar with us, because we've been around for a number of years and completed some local projects, such as the most important Doubletree, the Potts Project, and the Beakley Center at Bristol Hospital. One of the first things Dr. Niznik asked us to start with, along with PHG, was to do community outreach. So we spent quite a bit of time as a team, and we're still doing it, actually, to gather the information in the region as to what the needs are. So starting with the mayor, and all the contributors throughout City Hall, and volunteer boards and so forth, we delivered that information back to Dr. Niznik, and have come up with what he's delivered to us as his vision. So briefly, what you're going to see, you see on the videos here, the screen, is going to be energy-efficient construction. Wants to make sure that it's the most energy-efficient construction we could do affordably today. Indoor parking underneath the hotel in the conference center, which will be unique to our region, but it provides a tremendous asset to the facility. The connection that Lynn mentioned between all the facilities. So you're going to be able to travel indoors in inclement weather, all the way from the Doubletree to the conference center and back. We'll have outdoor facilities for weddings, meetings, and conferences. Robust construction. The doctor likes to build it, so it's going to last. We will have structural steel, reinforced concrete throughout all the structures. State-of-the-art IT, security, temperature and humidity control, as well as Hilton's guidelines to address the facility improvements necessary to deal with the recent health The conference center floor, just so everyone knows, is elevated above parking, but it will have the ability to support automobiles. So we'll be able to have auto shows, boat shows, even heavy medical equipment shows in our region now. Landscaping and architectural lighting, inside and out, will create a first-class atmosphere. The Home2 Suites, one of the first things the doctor did was ask us to add one foot of width to every guest room, because he wanted to provide a enhanced experience for the user and for the customer, our customers. Fully handicap accessibility, modular bathrooms. We're going to have the bathrooms created out of state, they'll be delivered to the site and plugged in. That allows us to minimize disruption and build through the winter months. 90 quiet, comfortable, spacious guest rooms, guest suites, meeting spaces, common areas, and exceptional acoustical performance in between the guest rooms, wall-to-wall and floor-to-floor. So in closing, I want to make a couple of comments about the conference center. As Lynn mentioned, it's 50,000 square feet. That was a dimension that we came up with, working with consultants from the region, and expertise for the uses that we will provide, or be using here. It will have a beautiful presence on Century Drive. This happens to be the, there's Century Drive, it'll have a beautiful presence on Century Drive, a grand entrance with decorative features, be able to drive a bus right underneath the entrance, easy access to parking, IBAY Construction in the event area, and a world-class dining experience with a brand-new commercial kitchen to handle the weddings and parties and events that we're going to have. And the outdoor space is going to be created to hold weddings and conferences with architectural features of stone walls, landscapes, and fire pits. The indoor spaces will have the most sophisticated amenities, including stage lighting, architectural lighting, acoustical ceiling, dance floor, and extraordinary sound and audiovisual. So again, I didn't mean to be too winded, but I wrote some notes down, and just wanted to share that with you. We're very thankful and proud to be part of the team, bringing our next jewel to the city. And I want to thank you, Mayor, and the members of the council for your support.
Thank you, Bill.
I think we have a couple of other images as well, right?
We do. We have them in the chambers, and then if we could just click through, so that our audience online could also see them.
That's actually a side view. The front is to the left. That's the front of the Home2 Suites.
There we go.
Great. Thank you, Bill and Jim. I think before we go to any questions that we may have, and we're also going to, I think, fold in Agenda Item 11 for the tax, let's see, the approval of the Tax Assessment Fixed Agreement. We'll waive that in two, but first, I just want to thank all of you for your commitment to such a quality project. I know with so many Bristol stakeholders, that it's important that you two all are going to be driving by this every day and seeing what it is. And knowing what Dr. Niznik accomplished in 2013, I'm fully confident that his project in the second phase is going to be just as good as his first one. And you know, as we sit here in chambers, this industrial park is just a little over 40 years old, and I'm looking up at the wall, and I remember when Mike Warner was mayor, when we put in that sign that said 229 Technology Park, and sitting in the chambers as a little girl, having them argue about what they were going to name it. But every mayor since, the eight that are on the wall here tonight, have all touched the industrial park in some way, and it's been a major part of our economy, and really looking forward as well. All of these improvements and everything that's happened there, just even in the last two and a half years, and the manufacturing cycle, and the buildings that have changed hands, Amazon coming in, all of that's really a great testament to everyone here in this community, working together to really grow that grand list. So thank you for being a part of it. Is there any questions from anyone here on the council chambers for anything relative to this project? If not, I would be looking to entertain a motion to move Agenda Item 11 to the top of the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And Agenda Item 11 tonight is to request approval of a Real Property Tax Assessment Fixing Agreement for Bristol Hotel 2, LLC, or as it signs, contingent on initiation and completion of construction of hotel, conference and event center, parking garage, and associated site approvals.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Is there anything you'd like to add to the agenda item, Justin?
I'll just say, this is sort of a fun way to think about these incentives. So we've been working with Mr. Frenness, Mr. Masetti, Lynn, Dr. Niznik for two years, right? And we knew that this particular And we knew that this particular type of incentive for this, a project of this scale, would really help it get off the ground. It's not like these discussions just started, right, for a tax abatement. They're always, for projects of this magnitude, part of the discussion early on, right? So the particular tax abatement schedule that you all see, we didn't dream it up, you know, one day. It took some discussions with the ownership and with Jim. Maybe everyone didn't get what they want, but we did it in a very respectful manner and we came to a good compromise and it's what you see in front of you. This allows, again, for a project that's this capital intensive, it allows those first years of operation. It allows Dr. Niznik and the team a little flexibility, right, to catch up on their investment. Obviously, the DoubleTree Hotel may be affected briefly during construction. So again, all of that was taken into account. The level of service won't, but just because of the construction next door. So those types of things were taken to account and this is a partnership with this group. And we knew this, what it would take to get to this point.
Thank you. Any other questions on the proposed abatement?
I just wanted to add that, you know, your honor, thinking of the mission statement, you know, making Bristol a high quality of life destination community for residents and businesses, that first line, I feel like this project truly exemplifies that mission. And of course, you know, helping people in Bristol to celebrate locally when they have these great events that they'd like to hold. So I think it's a fabulous addition to our revenue stream in the future, but to our city landscape right now, so.
It's true. If there's no other comments or questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Chair votes yes. Thank you so much, Lynn and Bill and Jim for joining us tonight. Please tell Dr. Niznik we wish him well and hope to see him soon.
Terrific. Thank you all very much. Thank you. Have a good night.
Lynn, can we keep these boards for a little while? Yeah, okay.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, coming back into our regular agenda, I'm going to ask members of the council, starting on my far left, with Councilman Forty, or do you have any announcements?
No, not tonight.
Councilwoman Barney.
Oh, wait, I do have one. I apologize. You gave me one earlier today, a suggestion for one. I just want to, oh, you wanted that under new.
It's fine. Announcements are good, too. It's important.
Sorry. Our regularly scheduled August meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, August 11th. And because that is the date scheduled for the presidential election primary, we will be moving our council meeting to Wednesday, August 12th. So I just wanted to let folks that watch us online or on TV to know that the meeting will move from Tuesday to Wednesday. And so we certainly hope that everyone takes the opportunity to vote. And as you all know, you can vote absentee this year, but either way, the election will take precedence on the 11th.
So nutmeg, please note that as well. Okay. Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Barney.
I didn't, but I just remembered that I saw on Facebook before I got here from your mayor's page. I don't know if someone else was going to mention this, so I'm sorry in advance. But the Farm to Families Produce Box is back. I see the mayor's got a flyer from, but I remember, I think, Monday, July 20th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Public Works Yard. There's also an event happening in Terryville on Friday. If you can't meet this event, I believe the timeframe is the same, 4:00 to 6:00?
2:00 to 7:00.
2:00 to 7:00. Oh, they've got a longer schedule at the fairgrounds. But I was able to get a box last time. I saw there was some leftover and it was a great addition right before 4th of July, all the ingredients for potato salad. So I would suggest checking that out. It's a great free thing for our community. Yep, thanks.
So in a special thanks to our partners at the United Way for really insisting that the Farmers to Families program honor their commitment because we were actually going to be skipped this week and then they weren't committing to another truck. So the truck that we're getting is different than the produce that we got last time, so it will not be the same box. So we're excited to see what that possibly will be. Councilman Proleski.
None, thank you.
Is that a?
None, your honor.
Okay, I do have one. We received information today from the Community Health Center, which is located right up here at 395 North Main Street, that they are going to be offering free COVID-19 tests and you don't have to have symptoms. So their pop-up testing location, which is a drive-up or a walk-up, will be on Thursday, this Thursday, July 16th, from 9:00 a.m. until 11:30 a.m. at the 395 North Main Street location. So they are looking for people to register so that they can have some adequate supply in accounting. And there is a phone number. It is 475-241-0740. And we will be sharing this off of the mayor's Facebook page, or you can call the mayor's office for information if anyone is interested. But it's free testing offered by Community Health Center in a pop-up, drive-through, or walk-up location on North Main Street on this Thursday. Moving on to the consent calendar, we have several items for consideration tonight, 5A through K. I would first like to entertain that we remove Agenda Item 5D because we are still doing some work on this item and it is not ready for council presentation. So may I have a motion to remove Item 5D?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any items that the city council would like removed from the consent calendar for further discussion or questions? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve Consent Calendar 5A through K with the exception of Item D, which has been removed?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number six are the reports and committee reports, and we're going to start with the Real Estate Committee where they have an item coming from the agenda.
Yes, your honor, and I'll have another I'd like to bring to the table as well. I hereby move that the City of Bristol accept the offer from Damato Realty LLC and/or its assigns in the amount of $20,400 for a portion of city-owned property identified as Assessor's Map Four, Lot Number 17, Enterprise Drive. I further move that this matter be referred to Corporation Counsel to prepare and/or review any necessary documents. I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Your honor, I'd also like to make a motion to bring item to the agenda on 474 East Road.
Okay, is there a motion to bring to the table? I mean, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded?
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. I hereby move to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to negotiate and enter into a lease agreement with Pontifical Institute of Religious Leaders, Filipini, the St. Lucie Province for rental of 474 East Road, Bristol, Connecticut, to the City of Bristol Parks Department for a one-year lease with the option to renew and a monthly rent of $500 per month. I hereby further move that this matter be referred to Corporation Counsel Office to effectuate the same.
Is there a second?
Second.
I know that you have discussion, Councilwoman Kelly.
You do?
Sure you do.
Can you be a little more specific, please?
I know you're very enthusiastic about this motion, so I thought I just.
Yeah, I am because it was nice the way it came together and the timing with the pandemic allowing us to have more room for educational initiatives and park and rec initiatives. And I just really enjoyed dealing with the two nuns who are both elderly, very sweet. And I don't know if this violates separation of church and state, but I truly felt closer to God when I was dealing with them. They're just beautiful souls, so. And I think you would second that, Mayor, and you as well, Councilman Proleski.
Did you feel closer as well?
Yes. Be careful with your answer. I did, your honor.
So this space housed Damontasori School for years, and it actually sits on an incredible amount of acreage. So there's going to be two or three classrooms that the Parks Department is going to be able to use for programming at a time when we're really looking for space in order to maintain social distancing. It's also going to be a real godsend for when the schools are in session and we need space for our programs because we are often bumped for scouting programs or sporting events or PTA meetings. So there may be the opportunity to have some of the longer sequenced programs be held there. And it's just a beautifully landscaped property. I think that there's a lot of outside space, too, that could be used. So I think that both Councilwoman Proleski and Kelly and Park Superintendent Maderos, thank you for getting this done. I think it'll be a nice addition to our inventory as we head into the fall. Is there anything else? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next to the ordinance committee, there are two items.
Thank you, your honor. The ordinance committee has referred two items to the council. The first is a new ordinance. It is concerning tax exemption for cogeneration systems. And I hereby move that this time and place of Tuesday, August 4th, 2020, at 4:50 p.m. in the council chambers, City Hall, 111 North Main Street, Bristol, Connecticut, be set for the holding of a public hearing thereon by the ordinance committee and that the city clerk publish notice of said public hearing and the proposed amendments to the Code of Ordinances as required by the city charter.
Second.
Discussion. Can you define a cogeneration system?
It's really energy, any generation of energy. This came to us from the assessor's office and the city assessor and his assistant.
I think it has to do with specifically the fuel cell project on Middle Street.
It does, but it could apply to other things.
Correct, right, but that's what generated it.
Yes, you're right. Generated it.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And, your honor, the next referral to the council from ordinance concerns Sections 22-1 to Sections 22-30, and this is a follow-up from the work that was done by the Charter Revision Committee last year, and again, for another public hearing. I hereby move that the time and place of Tuesday, August 4th, 2020, at 4:45 p.m. in the council chambers, City Hall, 111 North Main Street, Bristol, Connecticut, be set for the holding of a public hearing thereon by the ordinance committee and that the city clerk publish notice of said public hearing and the proposed amendments to the Code of Ordinances as required by the city charter.
Is there a second?
Second. And I just want to comment and say that while this is a lengthy section and there's what appears to be a lot of changes, it really is just coordinating the sewer authority into the water department, delineating the superintendent of water and sewer as the enforcer of many of their regulations, et cetera. So it's just, it's really just cleaning up the language so it fits the way we're doing business now with the charter revision.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Committee reports, starting on my far right.
Well, would I speak of our meeting today with Senator Blumenthal under school readiness? You think? It's very brief. The mayor and myself, administrators from early childhood and school readiness, the Board of Education, today have the opportunity to sit down and have conversation with Senator Blumenthal, who came to Bristol. And it's interesting the way it developed. Senator Blumenthal was on a Zoom meeting with Mary Alice Petricelli-Timmick, who is the grant manager for school readiness, early childhood. And she invited him on the spot to come to Bristol to speak to these folks regarding concerns as to how the pandemic affected monies, et cetera, and processes and keeping everyone safe. And he ended up coming. So we were able to sit in. He listened, asked questions, shared ideas, specifically of where he feels Washington is going with handling all this and the Senate, you know, in particular. And it was just interesting to see the dynamics that happened so quickly. So I really enjoyed sitting in on the meeting and I'm sure the mayor did as well. And hopefully, and I'm confident something good will come from this because Senator Blumenthal was very engaged and very responsive in showing up to that invite so quickly.
Thank you. Councilman Hunt?
Yes, your honor, I have a few items. The Energy Commission started a solar-for-all program recently. You've seen it on signs around town. And they recently held two webinars. And Posigen has received eight to 10 inquiries already for this initiative. And it was, this initiative was picked up through Sustain Connecticut. The important thing to remember about this is this gives affordable solar power to families that may have not considered that they would be eligible for either credit or income reasons. So it's a great program for our community and it continues. Also, CPTV is doing a documentary on garden projects and outdoor classrooms, and Bristol is going to be featured. As a matter of fact, they were already out filming, including the building of the gardens and chalkboards at Ivy Drive in Edgewood with about 10 kids from various elementary schools. Kate Carbone, Mike Dieter, along with the principals have been actively involved. They're going to continue their filming in Bristol in September. And the program, the documentary, documentary will air in the fall. So that's something to look forward to as well. For the Bristol Arts and Culture Commission, it's finally happening. The Arts and Culture Commission has been working on this project for a while to commission a mural on Main Street next to Webster Bank. Artist Corey Payne has been selected for this experience based on his reputation as a muralist up and down the East Coast. Corey has murals in several areas of Connecticut, Boston, Atlanta, Miami, Fort Lauderdale, Washington, DC, and even Bristol, Connecticut. Right now, he's working on a piece in Los Angeles before he comes into, back to Bristol. The mural will include obvious references to Bristol like mums, Ferris wheel, clock, a bicycle that represents the fact that Bristol's new departure was the leader in the manufacturing of derailers and handbrakes. With a roller coaster behind representing the path taken to get where we are today, children are having fun riding a bike on a path to Bristol's bright future. It's going to be quite an event when this starts. At the end of the month, he'll start painting. But I want to thank the Arts and Culture Commission for their work to get to this point, Webster Bank for the permission to proceed with the project as it's their location. I would also like to thank the Roberts Foundation and Chris Ziogas, hi, Chris, for your very, very generous financial support for this project. I don't think it would have gotten off the ground without you. So a sincere thank you. Bristol is going to be looking at this for many years to come, and it's going to be a great representation for our downtown. Again, Corey will begin at the end of the month and it'll take a couple of weeks to complete. So come on down and watch it grow. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is going to be for all the pickleball players out there. Parks and Rec Department have been working real hard to prepare the Riley Park tennis courts to include the use of pickleball. They've collaborated with residents and together they've been able to create four pickleball courts for your enjoyment. The Park and Rec crew is working hard to ensure both playing surface and new lines are in top-notch condition. Pickleball seems to be the game of the future, so go on down and check it out if you get a chance. They should be done next couple of weeks, I believe.
Excuse me, Councilman Rosano, what is pickleball?
Well, you know, I don't, I'm not quite sure yet. I remember when I was in like second grade, but me and Josh got a two-on-two against the other people. It's almost like a tennis game with two players, like a double tennis match with a wiffle ball and a wooden paddle.
And shorter nets, I think, too, right?
The nets are probably like two inches or three-quarter inch short, shorter than a tennis court net, so. But it is, it does seem to be very fun and it's popular against our, most of our senior population, I must say, so. Yeah. Not sure if you qualify, Pete. I also want to touch base in regards to the recent community conversations that we've been having in regards to the diversity, equity, and inclusion. I have to say that the movement has sparked awareness that's leading to your voices being heard, while also educating many on how policy is created. while also educating many on how policy is created and to make necessary changes that we so need today. We've recently compiled email addresses from citizens that have been attended the rallies or whom have contacted us to stay informed as to what our next steps will be. Within the past month, we've had several one-on-one conversations, and we found that they started conversation at various boards within our city council, police, parks, disabilities, youth services, and also with our colleagues at the Board of Education. We are currently in the process of trying to analyze what you'd like to see for future conversations. Some topics can be arts and culture, education, religion, race, vulnerable populations, and also, how can you be appointed to city boards and commissions if interested? Some of these topics are uncomfortable, but we have to acknowledge what reality really is. I truly feel that if we address our problems, we will find solutions together. If you're not on our email list, we can contact the mayor's office or any of our councilmen to ensure, or councilwomen, to ensure that we have the information moving forward. We want to personally thank everyone who's joining together to make a better tomorrow.
Thank you. Councilman Proleski.
Thank you, Your Honor. Two things. Briefly, the retirement board meets every month, and we welcome two new members this month. Mr. Orlando Kalfi, who is the liaison from the Board of Finance, attended the first meeting. We have a new member, Mr. Frank Rossi. Frank is a lifelong Bristol resident, a very bright young man. He has studied actuarial sciences, and he works for local pension consultants. I would anticipate that both of these members will contribute meaningfully as we go forward with the retirement board. And, Your Honor, may I ask, as part of my presentation for the Memorial Boulevard School, that we could move the addenda item up to be part of the report?
Certainly. So you're making the motion to move addenda item one to your report?
Please.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Memorial Boulevard Building Committee meets monthly as well, or more often if needed. And part of the addenda that we'll vote on tonight is the final approval of Phase II plans in the budget, which was passed by the Building Committee and sent on July 8th to the Board of Education, which again, passed it and moved it to this body. Work continues on the building, and the next step would be for the Phase II bids, if approved tonight, to go out and start the next section of the building. And the other thing I want to make sure people know is we have a volunteer professional photographer who is taking pictures along the way, inside and outside of the building. So I think what we're going to see is a very nice program at some point, watching the development and the revitalization of that beautiful building. But for the business at hand, we have a motion for the approval of the final plans and project manuals. If I may, I move to approve Phase II final plans and project manuals as prepared for bidding and dated May 28th, 2020, and the professional cost estimate completed in accordance with Level III of A S T M International Standard E1557, standard classification of building elements and related site work, Uniformat II, 2020, dated 6/23/20 for the Memorial Boulevard Intra-District Art Magic School Renovation Project and Memorial Boulevard School located at 70 Memorial Boulevard in Bristol, Connecticut. Thank you.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Councilwoman Barney?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm not sure if this fits best under committee reports, but I definitely wanted to mention it. I am on the fire board, and recently, I witnessed the fire department kind of spring into action at the Bristol Farmers Market. So as we were by the door, someone fell, twisted their ankle, and was injured. And it was pretty scary because there was vehicles coming in and out of the entrance, too. But Lieutenant Tom Scully, firefighter John Biskupski, and firefighter Brian Kamish all jumped into action quickly, made sure that the woman was safe, that she had the appropriate medical care, and of course, directed traffic to prevent anything else from further occurring. So they were great and were really grateful that they were there that day because they really helped out in a scary situation. So thank you to them.
Why don't you make that in the form of a motion to forward to the fire board? And then it'll get put in their personnel files.
Absolutely. So, yeah, I moved to have it placed.
Second.
Any further conversation or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilwoman Fordier? I'm sorry, Councilwoman Barney, did you have any other reports?
Nope, that was it.
I do have an item from, well, divided into two items for the Salary Committee, both from the Corporation Council's office. The first is to approve a salary increase for Assistant Corporation Council Jeffrey Steeg from salary step one to salary step two, effective June 28th, 2020, and to refer to the Board of Finance for informational purposes.
Okay, first, can we bring it to the table?
I'm sorry. Motion to bring Salary Committee to the table.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You don't need to restate your motion for Assistant Corporation Council Steeg. I think everybody heard it and understood. Transfer of new hire, new situation. Any questions or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Just for the benefit of the group, because Attorney Lacy, who's retiring, was at such a high level, the combination of both these motions will be still saving that line item in the Corporation Council over $6,000. Just so that, that's why those are to the Board of Finance for informational purposes. Item two is to approve a salary increase for the Corporation Council from $42,270 to $62,270, effective June 28th, 2020, and to refer to the Board of Finance for informational purposes.
Second. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any other council reports? Okay, we're going to move on to unfinished business. And I'd like to take this opportunity to invite State Representative Ziogas in his role in representing us in Hartford to come to the podium, and maybe just give us a little glimpse of what may be happening with the special session and any potential items that we should be looking out for.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight. And as I know, it's not the usual procedures. Yeah, it's interesting that we are here tonight. I was here for another reason, and that was to talk about Representative Han's project. Because I was one of the persons that first kind of promoted the project.
I know.
And it's come to fruition, so congratulations.
We appreciate the foundation support as well as your personal support.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to seeing it up there. All right, so now into Hartford. All right, so they came out today with proposed legislation regarding police accountability, which is going to have a big impact on a lot of local communities. There's a lot of moving parts in that particular piece of legislation, and it's like 68 pages long. Nobody's read it yet. But it would be good to sit down with you, perhaps the mayor and the police chief, to get some input from your point of view as to how that's going to impact. Because there are issues regarding negotiations and responsibilities of local communities in terms of how they want to monitor and evaluate police behaviors. I'm not sure exactly what we have in place in Bristol in regards to that. So I'd like to know better as to how impact, how new changes will impact what we're already doing. There will be an agenda item also on having safe and secure elections in November. Again, you know, it's going to be a very hotly debated issue. There's a lot of different concerns, I think, in terms of what's going to happen come November. And our city clerk, I'm sure, is well able to have some input, you know, some thoughts on that. But it's going to impact a lot of us in terms of what's going to be going on in schools at that day. You know, the health concerns for people at home and unable to make it, what we're going to allow for in terms of access to the polls on that day, absentee balloting, and that kind of thing. So that's all up in the air still. And then, if I can get one more item. The other things that we're being told, there's talking about capping the cost of insulin and increasing access to telehealth services. Those are going to be on the agenda for when we, they're planning to meet sometime the week of July 20th, 21, 22, and then maybe perhaps later in September for another set of issues which we're not necessarily clear on yet. But there will be some activity hopefully next week. At least that's the schedule for the moment. Things do change. But the police accountability and the election thing are going to have a lot of municipal impact. So I think those are, we should touch base on that.
So we can do that. And I think on our level, the concerns that we have are mid-year recisions. They were not dismissed, but also not endorsed on one of our governor's calls a few weeks ago. So from a budget stabilization standpoint here locally, if in fact, the Office of OPM is going to start talking about mid-year recisions to address the state deficit, that's a concern that we'd like to be apprised of as soon as you have any information.
Yeah, at this point in time, I'm not sure it's on the table.
Okay.
I'm not sure where we're going with all of those discussions. The COVID impact's going to have a lot of impact on a lot of different aspects of the larger budget, including what's going to happen. But you're going to, we're supposed to be getting money, 1.3 billion from the feds, and how that gets redistributed back to the towns, I'm not sure at this point.
Right, and that's the second point that we'd like to definitely point you in the direction of monitoring because we're not sure how it's being distributed either. So we have obviously the educational needs, how we're going to deal with some special education services, transportation, those contracts, but also the 25% that they're promising in order to match for the FEMA reimbursements to make us whole on COVID expenditures is welcome. But we do believe that there's probably going to be future financial needs as well. And on top of that, if you could carry the message back that it's ironic that FEMA has actually streamlined its application process for submission of reimbursement, but the OPM process is very cumbersome, requiring a lot of uploading, a lot of scanning, a lot of additional documents, and especially for maybe those staff people who may have previously held municipal positions. If they actually looked at it, you know, we would strongly recommend that they maybe model it after the FEMA process because it's a lot easier to use. So it's taking up a lot of staff time.
Your instructions are probably already longer than session we're doing.
Probably.
All right, I will, of course, be conscious of those. And if and when those issues come up, we will address them.
Great.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to new business. Is there any new business by council members that they'd like to bring forward? Okay, so downtown update. This is despite COVID, there's been a lot happening involving many of our city departments. Yesterday, Foodies opened, and a few of the staff members, we went over for lunch. It was very nice. Their sandwich, kind of the build-your-own-sandwich section is not done yet, but there was a bakery that was operating and lots of activity, and they've done a great job of cleaning up the building. So we're happy to have them open and functioning. Up the street, Pure Foods is continuing to do extremely well. And hopefully, many of you saw the Good Morning America segment that ran last week featuring J.R. Resgrove and his wife, Leanne, and their restaurants. The Public Works Department has been really busy. We have the parking lot project going on across the street, which is on track. They're developing the pathway from that parking lot that will connect to Main Street. And on the section of Riverside Avenue between Main and North Main, we're installing the parallel parking and some of those road accoutrements. And Parcel 10, which is the existing parking lot facing the Bristol Press and Pike and Plate, they're going for their last variance over the summer, and so construction should be starting there at the end of summer. We are using across the street for the Farmers Market every Saturday. And now, the Parks Department is actually using the space for their drive-in movies on Main, and tonight is Grease. So they're going to be doing those on every Tuesday night as a substitution for their summer concerts in order to be using an abundance of caution in terms of social distancing. This is a better activity geared toward the summer. We've talked about the mural, which we're really excited about, which is happening on the other side of downtown, on the Lorraine Building as it faces Webster Bank. All the fencing is up, and you see the site preparations happening at Memorial Boulevard. And we also received word that the hospital will be selling the two buildings on the corner of Main and Prospect and closing on those this month. So we'll be seeing some activity there as well. And further up the street, we have the Carrier Project, which is actually going very fast. And I believe we have an event there to commemorate that project, starting with the carriers, I think it's on Tuesday or?
Wednesday.
Wednesday? Next week. And then Kind Care is rounding out everything that's happening downtown on the Route 6 North Main Street corner. They are actually closing on their land purchase this month as well. They have already cleared all of their land use boards, and so that is something that will be starting relatively quickly as well in terms of the construction process. So that's the downtown update. Does anybody have any questions or anything that they would like to add in terms of any downtown issues? Okay, moving on to our coronavirus update. Just to let everybody know, our viewing audience as well, City Hall is open. We are still, again, exercising caution in terms of we are preferring appointments. And if you can do your business online, we're suggesting that you do do so. Make a phone call before you come. It might be something that we can help you with over the phone. Staff in the building are spending a lot of time working with our partners at the Board of Education on school reopening strategies. Obviously, you've heard a lot about the FEMA reimbursements, the CARES Act monies. We're getting visits and calls from a lot of our state officials who are coming in to check on things. As Councilwoman Kelly noted, Senator Blumenthal was here last month checking in on the business reopenings at Better Half. Today, he was working with our early childcare providers. Lieutenant Governor Beisiewicz was here for the opening day of camp, summer camp with the parks, and she's coming back on Thursday to check in on the tourism aspect. Will be out late compounds. Everybody's really working at full capacity, the Public Works Projects, Parks Projects. Finance Office is really busy. Assessor's Office is taking all of their renters' rebates. The entire first floor has a lot of people in it. And you'll notice that we're doing social distancing, and we're trying to really encourage people to be cognizant of the fact that we are here to conduct business, but we also need to make sure that our workforce stays healthy as well. So the drive-through window is still working for tax. You can drop off your payment, and you can mail it and pay online as well. So it's a very busy summer despite the fact that we've had three months of little activity in general with COVID. Anybody have any other concerns or COVID questions? Okay, moving on to resignations. Do we have any, Therese?
No resignations, Your Honor.
Okay. There are a few appointments, but there has been a lot going on. So I haven't made it through to touch base with a lot of people who are up for reappointment. So I like to do that before putting names forward. So we're going to be waiting on several of these. The first one that I would like to handle, though, is another one of our very busy offices that we just mentioned. He was instrumental in helping us with Home 2 and the Doubletree expansion, and that is to reappoint Tom DiNoto, our city assessor, for a four-year term to July of 2024.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the Planning Commission, I'd like to put into nomination the reappointment of John Posey for a five-year term to July of 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. On the Retirement Board, I'd like to reannounce two appointments that we made at the special meeting so that they could be part of the record and for our viewing audience. Councilman Proleski talked about them, one of them earlier, and it is the appointment of Frank Rossi. He is going to be serving a five-year term to July of 2025. And then we also reappointed Rose Parenti to another term, again, to 7/25. She is a former city treasurer and has been serving on that panel. The next set of appointments is for the Zoning Commission. This was also made at a special meeting, but I will reannounce them now so that they can be made part of the record. The first one is that we reappointed Thomas Mara, and he became a regular member for a three-year term to June of 2023. And we also appointed Blake Dalbienca to replace Thomas Mara. He will serve as the alternate member, and it is an unexpired term to June of 2023. And then lastly, I have two other-- member, and it is an unexpired term to June of 2023. And then lastly, I have two other appointments for Stormwater Trust Committee is to reappoint Sean Dunn for a three-year term to July of 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And to reappoint Rory Gyo as an alternate member for a three-year term to July of 2023 to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And just to announce to the viewing public, we do have a vacancy on the Board of Finance that I'm accepting resumes and letters of interest on. We have some vacancies in the areas of health, and I'm always looking for land use members, so if anybody's interested, they can contact the mayor's office. Moving on to, we've already done Agenda Item 11, we'll move on to Agenda Item 12, which is a resolution. So if somebody could have that motion ready. This is regarding the list of program applicants approved by the Economic and Community Development Board on July 2, 2020, to obtain benefits under the Neighborhood Assistance Act Tax Credit Program. This is a pass-through that we approve locally and then send on to the Department of Revenue Services. Does somebody have the resolution?
The Neighborhood Assistance Act administered by the Connecticut Department of Revenue Services encourages contributions to community agencies by providing a business tax credit for corporations that make cash contributions to such agencies. The tax credit is 60% of the contribution, or 100% if the project relates to energy conservation, Connecticut statute 12-6533. The municipality in which the community agencies provide services must hold the public hearing on program proposals, and the governing body of the municipality must approve applications from eligible organizations. The Policy Committee of the Economic and Community Development Board laid the required public hearing, held, I'm sorry, held the required public hearing on May 7, 2020. An extension by DRS enabled other agencies to submit applications for the program. At its meeting on June 4, 2020, the ECD accepted an additional application for the program. At its meeting on June 4, 2020, the ECD accepted an additional applicant, and on July 2, 2020, the ECD approved the list of organizations below. Approval of the following list of organizations by the Bristol City Council for submission of applications to the State of Connecticut Department of Revenue Services. The NNA applicants are: Number one, the Bristol Boys and Girls Club; number two, the Bristol Historical Society; number three, Greater Bristol Realty Corporation; number four, Hartford Area Habitat for Humanity; number five, Imagination, a Museum of Early Learning Center; number six, Nutmeg Symphony Orchestra; number seven, Prudence Crandall Center, Inc.; number eight, Shepherd Meadows Therapeutic Writing Center; and number nine, United Way of West Central Connecticut.
Okay, the motion, the resolution has been made. Is there a second?
Actually, the resolution is on the next page.
Yeah, I have more. Be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, that the list of program applicants as approved by the Economic and Community Development Board on July 2, 2020 to obtain benefits under the Neighborhood Assistance Act Tax Credit Program is hereby approved, and that the mayor, acting mayor, is authorized to submit such applications and any all documents relating to the Neighborhood Assistance Act to the State of Connecticut Department of Revenue Services.
Second.
Okay.
Excuse me, did I not have to read that first part?
No, it's good to read.
Oh, my God, that was a workout.
So the motion, the resolution has been made and seconded, so first comments or questions? I'm going to actually just abstain because I am a volunteer at the Bristol Historical Society, although I no longer am compensated by them as I had been years ago. Are there any other people who want to abstain?
I will abstain also, and with the Board of Director, member of Bristol Boys and Girls Club.
Okay. So if there's no other questions or concerns, a roll call vote, starting on my far right.
Yes.
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 So the motion passes with five affirmative votes and two abstentions. All right, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 13, the approval of the memorandum of understanding by and between the City of Bristol and Town of Plainville for shared building official services, which we are renewing from July 1, 2020, to June 30, 2021.
So moved.
Discussion? This is updated every year because we increase the rates based on the labor rates that follow the contracts.
I'll just say, this is a great example of regionalization, and I think it's great that we do this, so.
It's been going very well. It's actually very busy in both communities from a building perspective, lots of permits.
That's great.
Any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now I'll ask Corporation Council Cliff to come forward and talk about the, oh, no, you get one minute. The town and city clerk has reminded me that we do have a referral that came over from the Board of Education, so I'd like to revisit appointments for one minute. And that is a recommended appointee for the Stafford School Roof Replacement Committee, and the name to serve on the committee as parent in the school area is Lindsay Rivers. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Therese. I'm going to pass that back to her. Now, the floor is yours, Corporation Council Cliff, to tell us about our three executive sessions and who will be coming in.
Sure, and Item 14, 15, and 16. Now, because of the size of the room, I think we're just going to have Attorneys Lacy and Steeg on 14 and 15, and also on 16 with the addition of Attorney Eric Bartlett, who will be joining by cell phone.
Okay. Okay.
He's our outside counsel.
And we'll take them, we can take them in order? Okay. So I need a motion to convene into executive session for the Items 14, which is an executive session regarding the matter of Monica Greslick versus City of Bristol. Agenda Item 15, which is executive session regarding the matter of City of Bristol Corporation Council versus Deutsche Bank National Trust Company, and that's for a code enforcement item. And Item 16 is executive session regarding the matter of John F. Oliver Claimant, Joan M. Oliver, dependent spouse versus the City of Bristol for a workers' comp claim.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to convene into executive session to deliberate those three items. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll be right back. Okay, so I'm going to ask for a motion to come back into public session.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let the record reflect that there were no votes taken in executive session. Are there any motions to come forward?
Yes, Your Honor. I have a motion. I hereby move that the City of Bristol enter into a settlement in the matter of Monica Greslick versus City of Bristol, docket number HHB-CV-2026060132-S, in consideration of a payment of $6,500 to the City of Bristol. I hereby further move that the mayor, acting mayor, Corporation Council, or Assistant Corporation Council be authorized to execute any documents necessary to effectuate the settlement.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there any other business?
I have one, Your Honor.
Okay.
I hereby move that the City of Bristol enter into a settlement in the matter of City of Bristol Corporation Council versus Deutsche Bank National Trust Company as trustee rally 2006-QS8, docket number HHBCV156031085-S, in consideration of a payment of $60,000 to the City of Bristol. I hereby further move that the mayor, acting mayor, Corporation Council, or Assistant Corporation Council be authorized to execute any documents necessary to effectuate the settlement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any other motions?
We have one more, Your Honor, regarding Agenda Item 16. I hereby move that the City of Bristol enter into a full and final settlement in the matter of John F. Oliver Claimant, Joan M. Oliver, dependent spouse versus the City of Bristol, WCC file number 54408, in consideration of a payment of $45,000. I further move that the mayor or acting mayor, Corporation Council, or Assistant Corporation Council be authorized to execute any documents to, necessary to effectuate the full and final settlement.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we do have one last item. I do need to correct a statement I made. I only announced Thomas Mera at the last special meeting. We do need to officially reappoint him. So this would be to make him a regular member of the Zoning Commission for a three-year term to June of 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there any other business to come before the council? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Discussion, don't need. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.